At this time, I'll call the November 4th, 2021 meeting to order for the Dickinson County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our agenda that's been printed, but we do have some items to add to the agenda. Under reports of county officers, we are going to have a report from Barb Jones, our county clerk. Also, under new business, we'll have the Trail Road Bridge as one item. The second item is going to be regarding pews for the courtroom. The third item will be constructions, a contract for 1510 rain road. And I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of October 28th meeting, also the fund expenditures of $167,189.11. Wire payments, one to John Goff for $2,500, another to SD Security for $3,384, and also for utilities of $3,477.94.
I'm moving through the consent agenda.
Second.
You have the motion and the second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go to commission comments. Ron?
I just want to compliment the road crew, first of all, for Magistrate Seal they've been putting on the roads. I think it's done a good job of making the, preserving the roads and making it look pretty good. So I appreciate your hard work.
Yes, Craig?
Yeah, last Monday, met at the straw hall with Jed Sexton on drug court. Hopefully get it up and off the ground by the first of, well, first July, sometime in June. First, Community Foundation about some car funding for that, and hopefully that'll go well. That's all I have, Lynn.
Okay. Earlier this morning during our work study session, we did have Brandon Dross come in. He is the Harrington City Manager. And they've put together a tremendous package that's going to provide incentives for Harrington Commercial and Residential. And it's still, we just have the draft of it. But it involves the school board in the Harrington District, as well as the city commission. So we had that discussion for the Harrington Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. And so that was very encouraging to hear the action and steps taken. That's all I have as far as my comments. This is the time that we go to petitions, proclamations, and public comments. Before we have public comments, we do have a petition here or a proclamation. And so I'll go ahead and read that at this time. "This is a proclamation of the Community Foundation Week. Whereas throughout our nation's history, individual Americans have voluntarily joined together to meet important needs in their communities. This generosity and willingness to work together toward a common goal is a hallmark of the American character. And whereas public voluntary associations across the country make a substantial contribution to our nation's well-being in an area such as healthcare and social services, education and the arts, community development, and environmental protection. Many of these associations are community foundations, charitable organizations formed to attract and distribute the expendable and endowment funds. And whereas directed by a board of volunteers, community foundations provide effective leadership in communities throughout the United States, often supplementing or assisting the coordination of public programs and other services. They are one of the fastest-growing forms of philanthropy in the United States and abroad. And whereas in grateful recognition of the Dixon County Charitable Organization, the concerned individuals who donate their time, talent, and material resources to them, the Dickinson County Commission has designated the week of November 12th through 18th, 2021, as Community Foundation Week. Now therefore, the Dickinson County Commission does hereby proclaim the week of November 12th through 18th, 2021, as Community Foundation Week." Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to adopt the proclamation of the Community Foundation Week. Any discussion? After the vote, we will hear from some of our guests that are present. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So Elizabeth, I'll present this to you. And if you'd like to make some comments, and we could probably get the group picture. There you go.
Thank you. Just thank you for doing this. And you know, the Community Foundation, we are a place-based giving organization, and we represent all of Dickinson County in philanthropy. So again, thank you for recognizing this, and would like to just get a quick picture.
Okay.
Board members and everybody else, please come up.
Barb?
Doug, you can either be in the picture or take the picture.
Can I be right up here in the front of the?
Sure.
Are you guys coming?
Not completely, but oh yeah. Your spot right here.
Craig, you're hiding. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I don't like following you.
I wasn't prepared to speak. Frank, thank you. Thank you all. Have a great day.
See you next week. Bye.
That'd be a dollar, Captain.
Okay. We do not, as I mentioned, have any other petitions. So this would be the time that we do have public comment. If there is someone that would want to make public comment on something not on the agenda, this would be your opportunity for that. And you just need to give your name and address and your comments, three minutes. We do not have anyone that wants to make a comment at this time. So we'll go ahead and move to the next item. One of the items that we added to the agenda was to hear from our clerk, Barb Jones, in regards to the election that took place and the canvassing procedure.
So it was a fairly normal turnout, so to speak, for the city school election. It was a 17% turnout, which sometimes it's been as low as 13 or 15%. We had enough ballots for everywhere, which was kind of sweating because there was a question on the USD 393 that brought out a few more voters over that direction. But everything went well. I mean, you know, we didn't have any machine malfunctions or anything like that, so that was good. We have provisionals that will be considered at your November 12th canvas, which will be at nine o'clock here. We are in the process of checking those to see by statute what can be counted and what is not allowed. And so we will have that information available to you then. I think, what else? What other question? Do you have questions for me?
I do not. Other than on November 12th, we will have, or excuse me, yes. November 12th, we will have the canvas, and it'll take place here. And that'll be something that the Secretary of State has the regulations they give to you, and then you pass that information on to us. So it's a consistent, uniform-type procedure that takes place in every county.
Right.
And we've done this before.
Counties may do it different than smaller counties. But it's, you will have to have the canvas within 13 days after the election. So there is a window there. The canvas has to be done. November 15th is the latest day that the canvas can be done.
Okay.
And then we have to report information to the Secretary of State's office.
Poll workers, is that, and then everybody show up that was supposed to?
I had one poll worker that I am not sure what happened. She didn't show up. I don't know if she got sick and just didn't call, but then one of the counting boardworkers did call yesterday, and she got sick at the last minute, so we had to get a replacement. But other than that, everybody showed up.
Worked pretty good at Sherman and Fragrant Hill Voting Chapman, was there any?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have any phone calls or anything. I think everybody, and I actually had Blue Ridge put a sign up on the door, you know, Hayes goes here, Fragrant Hill, Sherman there. And I didn't hear anything from them that they had people coming out there saying what happened. So I think that went fairly smooth. And they'll put that sign up. I asked them if they'd do that again next year because in a bigger election, you'll probably have more turnout. And so they'll put the sign up again next year until people get used to that.
Well, you might explain why this went from the Ridge to?
Oh, well, we just did it because of security. The school had some security, not, I won't call it issues, but last year because of COVID, they had security in the school. And so we had to vote in the back part of the school, and it wasn't real accessible. So we decided to prevent future, maybe potential problems with that. We moved Hayes over to the Townes Community Center. So Buckeye, Cheever, Flora, Willard Dale, and then Manchester City, and now Hayes, all vote over at the Townes Community Center. And I added two board workers to help with that over there. And then Sherman and Fragrant Hill are going down to the USD 473 district office, which they'll be on one side, Fragrant Hill and Sherman, and then Noble Chapman and Ryan Hurd will be on the other side of the room where they vote. So, and it seemed to go fairly well for them. So there's two boards down there.
Okay. Well, thank you. Next report we'll have is from our county administrator, Brad.
Okay, we'll start out with an update on the renovation. Things continue to progress slowly, probably as slow as could be expected, or as fast as could be expected, slow too, as could be expected. The sheet rockers have moved up into the old jail area, which is now the new magistrate's courtroom. When they were rocking up there, they should get most of that home today or tomorrow. The ceiling grids are all done downstairs, and of course, the upper floors all done, with the exception of the jail, they were moving to the main floor. Roofers for the courthouse were supposed to be here this week. Hadn't seen them as of yesterday, so I'm not sure. Estimating it'll take three or four weeks to get the building, the roof done. And that will be nice because there are several places where pipes and stuff have gone through, and when it does rain, they're, it's leaking. So they need to get that fixed and not have those leaks coming in on the new sheet rock. Holding cells were installed last week behind the magistrate's courtroom. They're all completed, and furniture for those were derived earlier this week. The electricians finished pulling wire into basement, and they moved to the main floor. The upper floor is all done, with except for magistrate's courtroom, of course. And then the concrete people were here this week as well to finish the concrete around the north side and put down the pad where the monument will be on the northeast corner for the old Bell Spring curmory. And so we had some, I mentioned to you in the work session, we had some standing issues with the pews for the number one. The original intent was to utilize the pews again, reuse those, so we didn't have to purchase them. Our painter slash finisher has attempted, made a couple shots at trying to put a stain varnish combination on those pews to make them match the rest of the courtroom, and it did not go well. It looked pretty crappy, actually. We reached out to a couple other companies, we got their opinion, and they told us the same thing, the way those were done originally, and the varnish or whatever used back in the 50s, the way it was done, it soaked into the wood grain. And that's the type of wood grain with that note that you really can't sand it to get it to where a stainless stick to it and match the judge's bench and everything else. So we kind of went to plan B. We got a proposal to replace those pews with new ones that would match everything. The price, you've got a copy of that proposal, which is actually considerable less than I thought it would be, honestly, to go in and replace those. And then we would utilize the ones out of the courtroom in the hallway on all three floors. The ones on the upper floor that were there somehow got discarded into demolition, so we don't even have them, so we're going to have to do something. They're running out. And because those pews from the Jed Sexton's courtroom are actually the match to the color of brick that the courthouse was built with, we think that, you know, and I'll give the credit to Janelle, yes, she thought of it, that those would match putting a bench on the main floor and then in the basement, rather than having chairs for people waiting to go into the offices. So I think it'd look better and be much easier on our new floor, not moving chairs and stuff around. And so we'll save money by not purchasing those, so we're going to repurpose those with just the light, the light varnish on those to give them a new, a new look, and then we'll put them in those locations that I'm sure will look like Grant Hill. So the bid, and that bid formerly Davis Furniture Company is exclusive, that's delivery and installation. So coming from Wisconsin, when you figure that, that's actually a pretty decent price, I think. That's the same company that is, as far as the pews for the magistrate's courtroom as well. And those are already built, so. Couple other things, I guess, HVAC in the jail, we had some issues with that. We finally got that figured out. We were either freezing inmates out or we were burning them out. And so we got it to where, we figured out the issues with that. And so they will, most probably will start laying carpet on the top floor sometime here later this month, or first of next month. And then Tom will just, like the county attorney's office, pretty well done on the west end of the top floor, with the exception of the carpet. So they'll put carpet in there. And then when they get down on the west end of the basement, Chancy's office will be done soon, as will the appraisers and dispatch. We'll get those carpeted, then we'll just block them off, so we'll keep people out there so we don't damage it. So we can't move anybody in until we get the elevator done and all the plumbing and everything sorted out, finished.
Right.
But it is incrementally, we'll be getting some offices done.
Back, going back to carpet, it is the squares rather than?
It is the squares, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So the offices all get carpeted, the hallway gets the tile, ceramic tile. And so everything's moving along. I also provided you a copy of the updated timeframe, which the bad news on that is it's extended into January now. Could be sooner, but I wouldn't hold my breath. We still don't have word on the elevator. They did have somebody out last Friday late to do some measurements on the old, on the cap, on the old elevator, so I guess that's a good sign that we've actually seen a human being. And we'll answer the phone calls from the contractors. So hopefully we'll hear something pretty soon. And the contractors estimating two weeks, or our construction management company's estimating they could do that in two weeks. So I think we got it set for the end of this month, first of December, to get that done. And if that's the case, then we could incrementally move some people in. That's in plumbing and, and all of our HVAC and stuff is up and running. But I'm sure we're going to be around the first of the year, if not into January a little bit, before we can do that, under the best case scenario, so. Year-to-date staffing reports, you've got there in your packet from Diane. You'll notice that we haven't had much activity that way. We did have a promotion with Alex left at EMS. He was promoted captain of Mentos Correctory. And we did have Mary Avery, who retired from the Health Department. But we've had a number of new hires in the Sheriff's Department and Jail, which we, I think we told you in the past months, Jerry was able to get everybody up and going, and currently he's full staff. And I don't know that that's happened in the last decade, if not longer. I don't remember when we were full staff last time, and so I don't know what to attribute that to. I'll leave that to your imagination, I guess. And the year-to-date budget reports from Janelle. And if you look at the ending balances, they're all, I guess, what are we even expecting? They're all in black, actually. Everybody's been doing a good job with only a couple months to go in their budgets. And as always, they are, they're all watching it very closely. The sales tax is performing very well. I mean, we're, the August sales tax committed $138,000, which is considerably more than, or $10,000 more than it was last year at this time. So things are rebounding pretty well, and we're above what we were, just above what we were going to be, or just about the way we budgeted for the year. So this next month will surpass that, so. And special sales tax is holding, you know, the same way. Really happy to see that staying that way. Let's see, we've got our new public relations person here with Kathy Higman. We talked about that in the work session. And so she will be working part-time for us for a while here to try to promote the county and keep the public informed. And we're still, her job descriptions and duties are still a work in progress because this is something we've never had before, so we're all learning as we live along. So welcome. We did purchase diesel this week, and Sap Brothers got a little bit of $2.95 a gallon. Robinson's was $3.15 a gallon, so that's not normally the difference we see. So I'm guessing we caught it within minutes of the price going up. Shavel did call back and confirm Robinson was correct, and they said, yeah. So we kind of got lucky there. So I did attend a meeting with Chuck and the city manager on Marsh earlier this week, online with KDOT, where we were discussing a grant application with KDOT for an emergency vehicle, emergency electric vehicle, charging station to be located here off the Buckeye exit on I-70. And we're all collaborating together with the developer, the new motel, to hopefully get the funding to pay for 80% of the project to bring an electric vehicle, a charging station here. And it's part of a bigger project, KDOT's working on with $2 million to distribute out to try and outfit those areas that don't have electric vehicle charging stations across Kansas on I-70 and on the other two interstates, 135 and 35. So hopefully we'll be able to get that together and be successful on that. We may, we may be asked to contribute a little bit of money into that, but 20% divided among all of us should be pretty minimal. I think it'll be a positive thing if we can get that going, so. And then I was contacted yesterday by Mr. Sheriff Hornaday. He said that he, he and Jerry are in a, with the Sheriff's Association Conference this week. But he said that he had received a call from Sir of the Company and Andrew over the industrial vehicle outfitting, and they've had another vehicle become available from an agency that apparently canceled their order. And he was asking if it would be possible to do a second vehicle, like we did a couple weeks ago out of capital now. And then, then after the first year, they don't want to need two instead of four. I told him I thought it probably wouldn't be. I didn't anticipate that being a problem. And talked to Janelle, and she said, yeah, we've got plenty of capital to do that and take advantage of that and to explain that, you know, the vehicles that we anticipated are going to be available next week, or next month, or next year. And because of the semiconductor shortage, so these are, these would be a 2021 model. And we, we did have in our budget four 22 models for next year. And so we purchased one 21 now that will be outfitted. And if we do this second one, we would only have requirement of two next year, assuming we can get them next year. If we can't get them, they'd have to use a couple vehicles or whatever, two they determine are best suited to run a little bit longer. And we just have to deal with maintenance issues if there are any. So if you don't have a problem with that, we'll tell them to go ahead and try to secure that and, and see what happens. If we can get it, and if we don't, we'll deal with it as it comes. But it would be in the same price as the last one, which was the government, government price for us, so. But he hasn't, but they haven't been back to the office today, so I don't have any way to get that, so.
Yeah, I'm 20, I don't remember now.
48,000.
Forty, 45, something like that, probably 40.
Outfitted price.
Yeah, 45 roughly.
What kind of vehicle are you talking about?
Dodge Durangle. Police, police Dodge Durangle.
Doug, do we need to give the permission to make that or make motion to do it?
I think you would need to, actually.
Yeah, and if you could just do that with the same price as the last one, you know.
You know, comfortable, I should, I'd personally be comfortable with giving brand, but I think we need to have action taken on it, so it's in the minute.
Okay.
That's all I've got today.
Okay. Before we do that, we'll just stay with the agenda portion. As far as, Doug, do you have anything for us?
Just a couple of things. Of course, I'll help, I'll help Barb if we, if there's any recount, anything with post-election matters. The other is we're moving forward on the tax sale, we're moving towards that. We don't have a date for it yet, but we will. One of the other things is we've lost one of our attorneys off of the indigent fund that, that we have contracted with, and that's hopefully a temporary basis. But that's where that one stands. The others that are involved in it are picking up the slack by taking, taking up more appointments. And that's what we have going, so that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Under notices and communications, really didn't have too much here. Had a magazine from Ingram's, and then also from KDHE, and they give us notification of any permits that are issued in the county. And did anyone else have any comments or anything that would come in?
Did we, did mention Barbara's retirement? Pardon?
Yes, that's going to be Monday, November 29th. And location for that?
Here at the Health Department, from 11 to 1.
11 to 1, here at the Health Department. All right. So.
Sorry.
Glad to have that added on. Because one thing is, we, we do have a couple things where we won't be meeting on the regular basis because on November 11th, Veterans Day, we do not meet as far as the commission is concerned. And then also on Thanksgiving. So that's, with that on a Thursday, there's two meetings that we will not have. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on. We had some items that we added to the agenda. And since that was in Brad's report, and I think, I'm glad you brought that up, Craig, that needs to be in form of a motion. As far as the, and what, what would Brad, the wording on that, or as far as, on the vehicle for the Sheriff's Department?
He would approve the purchase of the second Dodge Durangle police vehicle at the same price as the last one.
Okay.
Don't move.
I'll second it.
We've got the motion and the second. Do, do we need any flexibility in case they have any extra charge, or do we just?
I think you can go and live with it.
Okay.
If there's a little bit there, we can adjust it, but I, I can land this picture, we'll be.
Okay. They go down.
Yeah.
Well, and the thing is, that we're going to run into is, you know, if we wait two or three months and push it into next year, who knows what things will be? I mean, it could be something would be available, but.
We may need to put on our poker face and tell them, let me approve $10,000 left.
Oh, well, I'll leave that up.
We'll fill it five.
Okay.
Two overboard, Brad.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, no further discussion. We had the motion and the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item we had is on Trail Ridge, or Trail Road Bridge. Been a south in Colorado. I was thinking about vacation already. The Trail Road Bridge, Brad?
This is a bid on material to replace 170 Trail Road Bridge located there. It's going to be one of the, we'll, Martin's guys will get on here in the near future. And these are typical bids for the I-beams and flat iron. You do have three bids on the I-beams and construction material. One from Wellborn Sales, one from Moten Enterprises, one from Husker Steel. Husker Steel got a little bid on that material. And then on the push sheeting and deck material in Door Grail, the only bid we received was from Wellborn Sales in Slina. So our recommendation is to honor the little bid from Husker Steel at $22,581.10. And then from Wellborn Sales for the sheeting material, $25,868.80, for a total of $48,440. from Wellborn Sales for the sheeting material, $25,868.80, for a total of $48,449.90. And that money would come from the bridge budget.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we accept the bid of Husker Steel, which was the low bid, and also Wellborn Sales for the sheeting and guard rail, that total amount, $48,449.90.
Second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item we have is the fuses for the court. And Brad, you put together something for us here on the specifications, and it's from Davis Furniture Company, and it includes the installation. It appears on this, formal thickness and so on, $19,666.32. Do you have anything to add to that, Brad, or?
Not really. I mean, that's not something that you just find everywhere, but our construction management firm had reached out to them. They are able to get it into their, if we let them know by tomorrow morning, they're able to get it into their, their production queue and can deliver those and have them installed the first week of January, which would be consistent with, when they'll probably be doing the small courtroom as well. They would probably come out and do them all at one time. We're hope to have the courtrooms ready, where they'll carpet down, they'd be ready to install by then.
I move to accept the bid, Davis. Second. Second.
So we have the motion and the second to accept the bid from Davis Furniture. The bid amount was $19,666.32. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item we added is in regards to a construction contract, and Brad, I'm a little bit about that, but that contract just came available today or was delivered?
Yeah, this is the bridge replacement, 1510 Rain Road. And if you remember, we looked at this one on your tour. This is one that we did not have in our scope as we had our bridge replacement plan in place. It came about suddenly with a hole in the deck. We did get Swab Eaton to go out and look at that. They said it needs to be replaced, unfortunately. So this is a, you know, we've already solicited the bid, it's been advertised, and Ebert Construction was the low bid on the project. The bidding price was $727,206.87, and they can start on that next week. So what you have before you is the construction documents from Swab Eaton to allow them to get started on that. So we would just need that formal approval, and if you'll just sign that, I can go through and date them all, there's 20 places to do the dates, and we'll get them started on the project. The funding for that will come out of the.
Special Highway.
Special Highway Sales Tax Fund.
And what was the amount on that again? Okay, is there a motion to enter this contract for construction on 1510 Rain Road?
So move. I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any questions from Brad or Janelle, financing wise, everything's, is anticipated, so.
Will this come out of our special sales tax money or?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The only other item we have is to authorize myself, since we are not meeting on November 11th, I would be able to come in and sign the payroll on behalf of the commission.
I'll make that.
On November 10th.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And I'll second it, and it's just a matter of convenience, since I live here in town, it's a little easier for me to come in than the other two commissioners, but.
It's a matter of appreciation on our.
Yes, and plus, the documents do need to be signed, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. As I mentioned before, we are not meeting next week, November 11th, because of Veterans Day. The following day at 9:00 AM, November 12th, on a Friday, we will be meeting here with our clerk and to do the canvas of the voting of the election that just took place.
That's 12:00?
No, it's at 9:00.
9:00, okay.
And that'll be a regular meeting, we'll call to order, and, and anyone that wants to observe, will you be able to put it up on the screen? And that way, if anyone wants to see the process and know more about it, that's a good opportunity. And it's, it's a process that we've used, you know, national elections, presidential election, every election, and it's from the Secretary of State of Kansas has the guidelines on how that is done.
So that'll be here, I did.
Yes.
9:30 if it's open to the public.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. We do not have anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Second it.
Motion and the second to adjourn any other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.